And the clock I'll call this meeting to order. Mr. Gibbs, will you please read the statement of compliance?
In compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, public law nineteen seventy five, chapter two thirty one. Notice of this meeting has been properly advertised in the Daily Record and Suburban Trends. Its agenda has been posted at the appropriate location and a copy has been filed with the Paquannic Township Clerk.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bluber?
Here.
Mr. Srisi?
Here.
Ms. Dempsey?
Here.
Mrs. Esposito?
Here.
Mr. Gettin is absent. Mr. McSweeney?
Here.
Mr. Pompeo is absent. Mr. Senick?
Here.
And Mrs. Shenton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Let everyone please stand for the flag loop. Alright, so before we begin tonight, I want to kick it over to the Nocteves to sing us a couple songs. So take it away, Mr. Arnold.
Right. They said it snowed last night. I don't know if that's true or not. Uh, I myself like the first time it snows in here and then I'm kind of over it, but we're gonna sing Let It Snow. It's a great song. Ready? A one, a two, a one, two, three, four.
Whoa, oh, 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 let it snow. The weather outside is dreadful. But the fire is so delightful. And since we had no place to go, oh, let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. It doesn't show signs of stopping. And I brought some corn for popping. Oh, let it turn way down low. Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow.
Let me finally get this down. I'll take home my honey, so.
You told me telling tiger all the way home. The fire is slowly dying. And my dear, we said goodbye. But as long as you love me so, oh, let it snow, let it snow, let it snow.
Weather outside is frighten. But the fire is so delightful. And since we've no place to go, oh, let it snow, let it snow, let it snow.
It doesn't show signs of stopping. And I brought some corn for popping.
Like to tell me, tell.
Oh, let it snow, let it snow, let it snow.
Finally, this could last. I'll take home my honey, so.
You told me telling tiger all the way home. The fire is slowly dying. And my dear, we said goodbye. But as long as you love me so, oh, let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. Let it snow, 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 snow.
Alright, thank you very much. That was great. Outstanding job. Yeah, right. Good luck following that indeed. Okay, good evening. Welcome to our December sixteenth workshop slash regular business meeting. This is our last meeting of the year and again, we have students and staff that we would like to recognize for outstanding achievements. I want to start by congratulating our staff members that were selected as the Governors Educators of the Year Award recipients. The board appreciates you and your contributions to our district. Board will honor you all at a future meeting. Congratulations and thank you. Tonight, the board will honor Alex Nacian for becoming the, or sorry, for being selected to join the North Jersey area band. Congratulations, Alex. Also tonight, we will honor the PTHS marching band for winning the US Bands two thousand twenty four Group Three State Championship. Our marching band is a force, to say the least. Uh, the kids are enthusiastic, dedicated and professional. They deserve all the accolades they received because they've earned them through long nights and hard work. Additionally, I want to congratulate Mr. Schreifer and all the band parents as I know these achievements would not be possible without your leadership and support. Congratulations to you all and well done. Couple more things. Additionally, the board tonight will receive a presentation on special education from our special services directors, Mr. Foglio and Ms. Bronco, as well as from a representative from CPAC, which is a great resource for our district parents. I also want to remind everyone that this Thursday, the district will host a ceremony at six thirty PM to dedicate the main gym to Ruth Kellet. This will be a great event and I encourage everyone to attend. Last, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah and a Safe and Happy New Year. This time of year is special and inspires nostalgia and goodwill. If you are able, I encourage everyone to give to those who are less fortunate this season so the holiday spirit reaches as many people as possible. I hope you all enjoy this holiday season with your families and friends and I will see you all next year. And now pass the mic to Dr. Portis.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Senick, and I'm actually going to pass it right over to our student representative.
Good evening, everyone. It's so nice to see you all again. The winter sports seasons have been off to a great start and teams have been working hard in their practices and games. Good luck to teams during their regular season games this week. As a reflection of the fall season, I would like to say congratulations to Marissa Vega on breaking the record for saves in a freshman season. She currently holds the record at two hundred sixteen saves. Congrats to our marching bands on their state championship. Boys soccer players Karen Brady, Sebastian Barahona and Luke White were recognized at the Boys Morris County Soccer Banquet. Congratulations to, on, oh, sorry, on all of the all-conference and all-county fall sports players. Congratulations to Sebastian Barahona on receiving All-State for the Fall Season. The ice hockey captains Kyle Gregory and Joe Barracaro were recognized at the Prudential Center amongst other ice hockey captains in New Jersey. Congratulations to Angelo Kundif and Henry Schubel on being recognized at the New York Jets football game last Sunday. Henry Schubel was recognized for the Young Man of the Year and Angelo Kundif is recognized for Player of the Week. Congratulations to Justin, to Justin Griskin for earning defenseman, to, sorry, for earning Defensive Lineman of Morris County. Congratulations to the District's Educators of the Year and Support Professionals of the Year. A special, a special, sorry, a special shout out to Mr. Sutherland and Ms. O'Connor at PTHS. The World Language Honor Society had a Friendsgiving where students in the society brought different cultural cuisines. It was a great event for friends to get together and experience food from around the world. Student Council organized a door decorating contest throughout the high school where teachers could decorate their door with their sixth period class. The contest started after Thanksgiving and they had up until December eleventh to decorate their doors. The winner will be picked by the security guards and announced at the Winter Pep Rally. The, the Winter Pep Rally will be on this Friday before winter break. Student Council has been working hard to make sure the students have a great time. The NHS did student groups, did stu-, sorry, did study groups for freshman and sophomore math and science classes. NHS also hosted a trivia night this past week. FBLI organized a Polar Express night for elementary school students where they could participate in a variety of activities and then watch the Polar Express in the auditorium. Donations were made for Toys for Tots and there was even an appearance by Santa Claus himself. Students of the Marketing Two, Capsule and Fashion and Merchandise classes went to the American Dream Mall last Thursday to learn about the behind the scenes of retail and business industry. Students were also able to use the topics and skills they learned in the classroom and see it in real life form. The Blue and Gold Parties have been campaigning this week setting up their platforms and collecting data on student views on certain platforms. Both parties are finding creative ways to campaign to gain support of staff and students. The election will take place in school on Thursday. Best of luck to both parties. The choirs went on a winter tour this Friday. This is where they sang their winter songs around the elementary schools, middle schools and Holy Spirit. It's a great way the high school spreads holiday cheer. The winter concert is December seventeenth. Come out and support the music department as the students have been working hard earning, learning their music this past couple of months. The dedication of the gym ceremony is on December nineteenth and it will be dedicated to Ruth Kellet at six thirty in Gym B. Mrs. Kellet was a teacher, coach and athletic director at Paquannic Township High School for over thirty-four years. She was the first female to coach a boys' basketball team in the state of New Jersey. During her tenure, she, she coached girls and boys' basketball, softball and boys' golf. She earned Division and County Championship in Girls Basketball and a State Sectional Championship in Softball. She was also named Coach of the Year four years in a row in Boys Golf. Mrs. Kellet, along with two other colleagues, started the Morris County Basketball Tournament for Girls. She was also one of the first, if not the first, female to become an Athletic Director in the state and was named Athletic Director of the Year in nineteen eighty-seven. She became an unofficial representative for Equitable Practice Scheduling and Time for Both Men and Women, serving on the NJSIA Executive Community. She was a trailblazer for quality in sports and role model for our students and community. On behalf of the students, we'd like to wish everyone a wonderful holiday season and a Happy New Year.
Well done, Liliana. And I'm going to point out too that she was also a participant in the wheelchair basketball game, um, which cosmetically we won despite the fact I think we scored four baskets, but they gave us like sixteen points per basket, but fun experience, right? With a great turnout. Yep. Alright, thank you, Liliana. Um, before we get on to the recognitions, I have a brief report as well. Since our last meeting, I've been able to participate in some really great events that celebrate community and reaffirm my faith in the power of humanity. As I mentioned, the wheelchair basketball game took place at PTHS, um, on November twelfth. That was inspiring and fun and really, really hard. Um, also I had the opportunity to work with volunteers at SJG to help prepare meals for the homeless, um, and that served as a powerful reminder of our moral obligation to support our neighbors in need regardless of where they live. We also held our first AI team meeting, which, uh, we'll make a reference to that during the policy portion of the meeting, but that was conducted by Mr. Shea, conducted quite well. We celebrated our Governor Educator of the Year honorees, uh, last Friday and then looking ahead, we have our winter concert right in this very room tomorrow night and then on Thursday night, we'll be hosting the dedication to uh, Mrs. Kellet for what will now be known as the Ruth Kellet Gym, um, in a meeting to discuss some of the logistics. We were talking about how it's actually Gym B right now and I believe it was Mr. Hazler came up with the idea to call it Gym K moving forward. So I like that idea as well. You didn't smile when I said that, so it might have been somebody else who brought that up, right? Okay. You two are very similar, so I got confused. Um, take the praise when you can get it. Uh, and then on a exciting professional note for me, I was fortunate to attend the RTM National Superintendent's Forum this past Sunday through Tuesday and came away with some really great information and ideas while also being able to spread the word about Paquannic during my presentation on enhancing the employee experience. It is fun going to national events because people think if you're from New Jersey, you're inherently scary and weird. So I kind of capitalized on that and definitely played the Jersey brand to the best of my ability. Finally, our last day before winter break is Monday, December twenty-third. My hope is that will be a productive and festive day and my expectation is that our attendance will greatly exceed the minimum requirement, uh, in order for a day to count. So please make sure you're here and that you bring your friends here as well. Um, I also appreciate that we have such a festive environment tonight. I'm so glad we get to celebrate with the Nocteves who have since departed, but also um, with our incredibly talented band here tonight. Really helps set a great tone. Um, I look forward to a joyful and fun holiday season as well as looking forward to an outstanding two thousand twenty-five. Now I'll point out two quick things. I completely support Mr. Arnold's point that there is no snow in the forecasts for the rest of the winter, actually. So we're, we're going to bank on that. Uh, was actually kind of a relief when I got up this morning. I looked out my window. I'm like, oh, we're good. Um, but I'm sure we'll have one or two snow days, but hopefully not too soon. Um, and then one other thing, there is a change in the sequence, um, for the recognitions. We were originally going to recognize the band first and then our North Jersey area band member second. But we're actually going to mix that up. Um, and this came, a recommendation of a staff member. It was not Mr. Hazler. Um, but it was, it was Mr. Schreifer and, uh, I think it's for a really good reason. So I don't know who's gonna. Well, it's a microphone, so Mr. Hazler's on his way. So, um, Mr. Hayes, I'll give you an opportunity to first, uh, introduce our North Jersey area band member. I hope Mr. Schreifer can come up and join us for that as well. And then we'll take care of recognizing and honoring our band members, but we'll do a different sequence. Thank you.
So thank you very much for the opportunity to present, uh, and recognize our students this evening. We don't always, we don't always get to do this in front of the, of the large band and Mr. Schreifer and I were talking because, uh, this is just a tremendous accomplishment for this young man. Um, Alex Nacian is, um, first chair in the tuba. I can't imagine how hard that is to, to actually go there and, and perform. Um, knowing that people are, you know, people are judging you, uh, based on your performance and to get, you know, first chair, right? Um, to get first chair in this competition and, and performance is just unbelievable. So Alex, congratulations. I don't know where you are. I know you were just singing. There he is. Andy was, was, uh, in the, in the front there, but, uh, come on up here, bud. Uh, congratulations. Mr. Schreifer, um, we're, you want to get up there and get a pic? Okay.
I know. I finally got, I got the right seat.
Alright, ready? One, two, three. Alright. That's good. Alright. Congratulations, Alex. I'm going to ask Mr. Schreifer to come up again, but I, I also, um, we're here tonight to recognize our marching band. I say this every year, but as a principal, um, the start of the school year is based on two things. One is the success of our football team and the other is the success of our marching band. And we are incredibly fortunate that every year our marching band sets off just a positive tone and it doesn't, that doesn't begin in September. You know, it begins in May, I believe, when you actually decide what show you're doing and the work that Mr. Schreifer and, and his team put together. Um, they decide on the show and then they start, uh, right from the beginning and, uh, the work that they do, and I'm often here late at night and so are they. Um, whether it's, it's starting the percussion line or the color guards out there. Um, it is just unbelievable the amount of work that you do and then to put time in all summer, then go to band camp. Uh, and then, you know, the practices late into the evening, uh, sometimes eight, nine, ten o'clock at night, you're out on that field. Uh, and then all day on Saturdays, you get ready for your competitions. Um, you know, you, you make a lot of sacrifices. It's time to hang out with your friends, you know, sometimes you have to, to judge, you know, even doing schoolwork sometimes and you, you get it all done. And that is, is just a testament to your hard work, your dedication, the fact that you're just outstanding students inside and outside of the classroom. Um, I want to congratulate Mr. Schreifer and his team, um, the amount of time and effort that he puts in, uh, and his team to make sure that you have everything that you need. Um, I've never seen anything like it. So Mr. Schreifer, thank you very much to you and your team. I would also like to thank, I think they have the coolest band, parent name, but the Amps, uh, they are fantastic. And not, not, not just donating their time and effort, but also financially, I know they support the band a lot. Um, in terms of getting you where you need to go, they're loading the trucks, they're driving the trucks, they're there unloading. Um, and they're, they're your biggest fans. And, uh, so thank you to the, to the parent parents that are here this evening. Our marching band has moved up, uh, over the years and we are now in the open division, which is the highest division that you can be in. And for a small school, we're out there competing um, in the toughest, in the toughest division. And this year, you know, they took first in every competition, uh, that they, that they could do. And even came in, they came in third in Nationals, but it was by a slim, slim margin. And the, the number of bands that, that, that were there, uh, you gave them a run for their money. And, uh, for, for a school of our size, that's just unheard of. Um, and we're here tonight, not just to celebrate all your victories, but also your Group Three Open State Championship. So congratulations to our Paquannic Township High School marching band. We are so, so proud of you. Mr. Schreifer is just going to add a few things. I am jealous because you do get to perform on Giant, the Giant Stadium Field and you're doing much better than the Giants are, are doing this year. Uh, so I'll be, but it is, uh, it, that's also a tremendous experience and, and Mr. Schreifer carefully calculates where you guys are going to perform. And, uh, to put you on a, and have an opportunity for you to put you on that stage, those are memories that you're going to take with you forever. So, uh, to the seniors, thank you for your leadership and your dedication. Um, I know it's been a very memorable year for you and, uh, this is, you know, just, this is one of those last, right, recognitions, but there's more to come for you. I know many of you are continuing on. Uh, there's so much power in music, right? And never lose sight of that. Even if you don't participate in a, in a formal band, keep practicing, keep twirling the flags, keep doing those things that you are passionate about, uh, because that takes you far in life, right? Um, we're starting a faculty band that we're, we're, we're looking to do and, uh, I'm breaking out the Barry Sax. I haven't played the Barry Sax in like twenty-five years. So, um, but yeah, we'll see how it goes, uh, but it's, but it's going to be fun. So congratulations to you guys and Mr. Schreifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you to Mr. Hazler. I've never had to speak right after you before, or right, yeah, it's, it's a lot of pressure. But I just want to take a second to thank, uh, the Board of Education and Administration for recognizing our program and the incredible achievement of these students. Uh, your support means so much to us and plays a huge role in, in their success. So, uh, congratulations to our amazing students, uh, who spent countless hours practicing and rehearsing. And I think what separates them from the pack is just their character. They're just the best people to spend time with and work with and, uh, watching them grow over the season, over the years is, um, just a privilege that I, I can't even begin to talk about. So I also want to shout out our incredible staff, uh, who inspire these guys and push them to be the best that they can be. Um, and inspire me as well to be a better teacher every day. I learned so much from the staff that works with the marching band. They're, uh, another group of amazing people. Um, also like to shout out the, the parents, um, the Amps, um, who their unwavering support ensures that, that our program can keep thriving. So we appreciate them so much. Um, I'm incredibly proud of this group for what they've accomplished and I thank you for believing me and believing us. So, thank you, everybody.
So we gave out their, their certificates ahead of time. So we're going to have you come up, uh, to the front here and let's get your picture. Yeah, you can go in front of the table, everybody. Alright, parents, now's the time for the picture. So come on up, although it's probably better from back there. Alright, congratulations, everybody. All right, congratulations, everybody. You guys can, you guys can head out. Just before I leave, I'd like to wish the, the Board of Ed a very happy holidays and thank you for all your support of our students and our staff at the high school. Wish you all a very happy holiday and restful break. So thank you.
Okay. So before we move on with the presentation, we have one more person that we'd like to honor. And that's Mr. Gibbs.
Good evening. There's a resolution on tonight's board agenda to extend the time for the new capital lease on Seven Industrial Road property. A new lease is required effective January 1st as the board will be changing effective January 6th. And the new board will have to vote on the new lease. Currently, I'm working with the owner and the tenants regarding their move to the top floor of the building, which will allow the preschool to occupy the space on the second floor. The progress is hopeful, on the move, and more information to follow. There's been a change in the law with respect to school bus drivers not needing a CDL license. The effective date of the new law has changed to July 1st, 2025. Also, the driver will have to obtain an S endorsement on their current driver's license. The state is working on what the S endorsement will entail, which is the reason for the delay. We have received three Oprah requests regarding the 2023, 2024 information. All requests were handled in accordance with state guidelines. The smart boards that were board approved to be disposed of were purchased by Watchon Board of Education for $10,000. They were the only district that bitted on the units. The new windows at the high school are on track to start, the installation on Friday, December 20th, of which is a tentative start date. The approximate installation time is 10 days. The installation has been delayed due to manufacturing issues. And finally, I would like to wish everyone a happy, healthy and safe holiday season. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. All right, now we have someone else that we would like to honor. And that person is Ms. Dempsey. Tonight is Ms. Dempsey's last meeting and I want to give everyone an opportunity to say a few words. So we're going to start with Ms. Esposito and then we're going to go to Ms. Shetan and go around the table.
Okay, tonight we have the honor of celebrating someone who has left an invaluable mark on our district. A fellow board member whose unwavering dedication, integrity and service have elevated this board, Ms. Megan Dempsey. Megan, your deep knowledge of board operations, policies and procedures has been nothing short of extraordinary. Your commitment to the highest ethical standards has set a benchmark for all. You've consistently approached every challenge, every decision with an unbiased perspective, ensuring that the needs of our students always remain at the forefront. No matter the pressures or politics of the moment, you never wavered and your focus never shifted from what truly matters, the well-being and success of every student in our district. We know that serving on a school board isn't always easy, especially during election seasons. You have faced your share of unwarranted criticism, some of it harsh, unfair and undeserved. Yet you handle these moments with grace, resilience and an unshakable commitment to the students of Poughkeepsie Township. When we say you are our strongest board member, we are not offering platitudes, we are stating facts. Your thoughtful questions and discussions have elevated our work as a board. Your insightful contributions have challenged us to think deeper, act smarter and always, always strive for better. On a personal note, I will absolutely miss working with you. I will miss your calm demeanor, your sense of humor and your invaluable knowledge. It has been a privilege to work alongside you these past several years and I am even more fortunate to call you a friend. As you step away from this role, know that your impact will continue to be felt long after you leave. The students whose lives you've touched, the policies you've shaped and the examples you've set will resonate for years to come. Thank you for everything. We are better because of you and I am better for having had the opportunity to work alongside you.
So it's my turn. I brought tissues because I have the worst cold ever, but I'm glad I did.
Well, I might need one in a minute too. So I'm good. It's like what she said, but differently. So hold on. Tonight I want to recognize Megan, who's six years of service on this board have been nothing short of extraordinary. As our policy chair, she has been instrumental in moving this board forward, ensuring that we remain focused, thoughtful and aligned with the best interests of all of our students in our community. Her commitment to collaboration and preparation has set an incredibly high standard for all of us. Before Megan joined the board, we knew each other through Hillview activities and it has been an absolute privilege to see her step into this role with such passion and integrity. Over these years, I've come to admire her not only as a colleague, but as a trusted, confident and friend. What truly sets Megan apart is her ability to listen with an open mind and heart, especially during challenging and polarizing times. When contentious issues have arisen, Megan has always made it a priority to reach out and have real conversations to ensure she fully understands all points of view before making decisions. This thoughtful and inclusive approach reflects her deep respect for this community and her belief in the importance of dialogue and understanding. Megan, your leadership, your empathy and your steadfast dedication will be terribly, terribly, terribly missed. I'm profoundly grateful for everything you've done and wish you all the best in the future. Don't be a stranger. I'm really going to miss you.
I'm glad I'm going third because I don't know what you guys are going to say down at the end of the table over there, but. So yeah, I, I would also like to thank Megan for all she's done for the district and for the board. You know, when I started on the board, Megan helped answer many of my questions, helped me figure out what I really needed to know as a new board member and offer a perspective and her guidance. And I would definitely say that I'm a better board member for working with her for the last five years. Megan always brought a thoughtful, intelligent and a very measured perspective to our discussions, whether it was on curriculum, finance, policy. And of course, when Megan spoke, you knew the information she was delivering or the questions she were asking were important. So it was always, I always felt it was time I was listening very intently to what Megan was saying. And as for policy, we will definitely miss Megan's leadership on policy, which is our primary responsibility. She's taken that role seriously and done it exceptionally well. So Megan will miss you. Pretty sure over your tenure here on the board, you have helped improve the district for the staff, administrators and most importantly, our students. So thank you for, for all you've done and of course, enjoy your free Monday nights.
I'd be happy to go. I didn't write anything down though. So. Oh. Joe's prepared. Let him go first. Okay, so I know I did not write anything down for this. So this is going to take a little while. You guys want to stretch? So Megan came on with six years ago. And when Megan first came on the board, I had already been here for a couple of years, three, four years. And I wasn't thrilled. I will tell you that Megan and I disagreed upon every single thing you could imagine for at least 18 months. And then I watched Megan and I watched how she listened to both sides of everybody's feelings. And she actually listened to me and a lot of times I was screaming at some point. This was in exact though, don't worry about it, not in the meetings. But she listened to both sides of everything and she always made her decisions based on what was best for the kids. It was not about her feelings on something or it was always what's best for the kids. And over time, I started to realize how amazing of a board member she was and how important she was to our board. And I think I remember the first time I called you, you picked up the phone and you said, Sam, are you calling me? Is everything okay? And I just wanted a clarification on some policy or something that I was just a little not sure about. And she explained everything and at the end I said, all right, that works. And she said, so which way are you going to vote on that? And I said, it's none of your damn business. But really, I, I have to say that if, if anybody has ever changed my feelings about themselves in my life, it is absolutely you. I'm, I'm really, really happy that you ran. I would have never said that six years ago. And that you ran, ran again, and I know that what you went through to do that, it wasn't easy. Running isn't easy. What you went through is a thousand times worse than anyone should ever have to go through. But you did it and you did it for the kids in this town and for the staff and, and you know, everything else. And, and I appreciate that. And I know that there are 3,918 people that also appreciate that in this town. And maybe in two years when I leave, you can take my spot and run. But again, thank you. I want to thank you again because really the effort that you put in and the time and it was just, it's just amazing. It's just, you did an absolute fantastic job. And I've served with how many board members, I can't even tell you. And I, you're just fantastic board member. Thank you.
All right. I just wanted to thank Ms. Dempsey for six dedicated years to the Board of Education. She did probably more work than any of us outside these meetings, probably combined, honestly, more work than any of us. Being a policy chair, she did so much and she knew so much. And yeah, Tina is going to have some really tough shoes to fill. She taught me a lot of new things and I was really a pleasure to work with you and sit next to you. So thank you. So I'm not as good a public speaker as everyone else, but thank you. I really do appreciate all the things you did. Thank you so much.
All right, Megan, when I joined the board, I didn't think that I would get along with you as well as I, as I did. You are a extremely hard worker. Your opinion, no matter what it is, is extremely well informed. And your goal in everything that we did was success for the children, student achievement and transparency of the board to the public. Any endeavor that we undertook, you were always the one that first said, how's this going to look? Are we doing it the right way? Is this transparent enough? Are people getting enough access to us? You, I, I can't overstate how valuable you are to this board. You're a fantastic board member. You're an NJ SBA master board member. You're an NJ SBA rep. And you led our policy committee outstandingly for your six years. So in honor of you being on the Board of Education and your service to the Board of Education, as a board, we got you a plaque, which you could hang in your house, I'm sure in a very prominent location. We got you some flowers and then Dr. Portis would like to say some stuff as well.
Thank you, Mr. Sanic, and also thank you to really all the board members for really helping to make this such a special send off for our good friend, Ms. Dempsey. I got to know her first through her wonderful family during my time at, at Hillview. And very little has, has changed in my perception of said wonderful family. I'll point out too, that Fiona is the youngest person ever to sign a CUSAC attendance sheet, I believe in the state of New Jersey. I think she was three when she signed it and she did a pretty nice job with it too. But what's consistently impressed me about Ms. Dempsey is her integrity and courage. We've seen those certainly on display in board meetings, but also more so behind the scenes. And I've been impressed with her fearless questioning. Sometimes as an administrator, when somebody asks really good questions, it's, it can make you a bit uncomfortable because you realize, oh, I don't have an answer for that one just yet. But those are the kind of things that make you much better at your job. And it's nice to be able to tell a board member, yes, I am better at my job as a consequence of your presence on the board. So I appreciate the precision and accuracy with which you approach policy and all other work. You do so with a degree of honor, grace and elegance that is quite remarkable, but you also bring humor to it as well. And shocking as it may sound, we did have fun with some of our, our policy meetings as well as a few other meetings that we attended. And we're definitely going to miss you as part of the board, but your legacy will certainly live on. Thank you for your contributions and I'm sure your presence will continue to be felt. Thank you.
Megan, we got a couple of things to give you. Sure, if you want to say something, go ahead.
I had a few things for board member announcements, but I'll say it now. That was very nice. Thank you all so much. You know, I'm a crier. So thank you all for, for all of your kind words and this, this is so nice. But I mostly wanted to thank the, they smell good. What I really wanted to do is thank the community for electing me to serve two terms on this board and to bring my perspective to the table. There have definitely been some challenging situations to navigate, like a pandemic and many other things. But I've tried hard to make decisions with the best interest of all of our students in mind. So I really appreciate that. So many of you mentioned that and that have seen that. This board that we have now and that we have had for a few years is a truly amazing one. And I have said since I first got elected, when talking to anyone about how we function, that we are not of a single mind. We definitely don't always agree on what the right decision is, but we're respectful of each other's perspectives and experiences. We listen to each other. We listen to the community, even if we don't always make the decision that you want. And we listen to the administration and the staff, again, even if we don't always make the decision that you want. But I truly believe that everyone here acts with the best interest of this district at heart. And I have no doubt that that will continue to be true in the next year. And I just have to say, I think I, I walked into the first meeting and saw that my name tag was next to Sam's, actually right in the other seats. And I think I thought somebody was playing a joke on me or on you. I'm not sure who they were trying to get. But you showed me the ropes as well and I'm really thankful for the friendships that I've made with everybody on this board. Again, I have no doubt that this is going to continue to be a great board for the coming year. I'm so grateful to have had the opportunity to serve, to work with all of you, Dr. Portis, to work with you in this capacity, Mr. Gibbs, Mrs. Van Sickle and Mrs. Sheridan before her and all of the staff that I've had a chance to interact with and, and who Um, interact with and, and who have also stood up for me, um, in public when necessary. Believe it or not, I am going to miss some of this, but I am also looking forward to being on that side of the podium for a while on, on a few Monday nights.
There's a stipulation, you can't come back to a meeting for eight months.
I'll make a note of that and mark it in my calendar. Thanks, everyone. That, that was all. Thank you.
All right, time for the presentation.
Well, all right, um. So, the other day when we were preparing for this presentation, I had mentioned to Helena, I was like, Helena, I think I'd really like to say something about Ms. Dempsey. It's her last night here and you guys all did that already. So, all right. Everything that I was going to say, you guys pretty much aired. Um, but thank you, Ms. Dempsey, for all of your work. You were one of the first families that we met when we moved to town. Um, and we learned that you were on the board and then we started paying attention and, um, everything that the, the board has said is true. Um, you handle yourself with such poise and professionalism. Um, you were more prepared than I ever know could be available to someone. Um, with policy and your questions, the questions really stuck out for me when we, you know, Mr. Dr. Portis mentioned. That your questions are challenging, um, yet we tell, we can tell you're listening and you're, you're processing what information we're putting out there. And that, that really means a lot. So if you have any challenging questions, I look forward to it and, uh, I'll get back to you, um, in eight months. I'm not sure if that's in policy, but anyhow, um, so, uh, Helena and myself, uh, are back. Um, in front of you tonight to just give our special education presentation, uh, a light overview of what we, um, we go through. Um, with the district and all the, you know, programs we have available, um, and then followed up with a, um, presentation from, uh, our friends in CPAC. Um, so tonight we just hope to quickly go over, um, a few questions, uh, what is an IEP? Uh, do I have to read the whole thing? Um, we have programs, um, and then where can I find help?
Okay, so communication protocol. So we have developed a protocol, um, for each school. Um, so we will share this presentation so that everything has a link, so it'll be easy to access. It is also listed on our website, so it is under each school and then under, I think, communication protocol. Um, so if you click on any of the links, so every school has a list of staff members and it just goes down. Um, you know, the step one, who to contact, normally it's the teacher, then going and leading into, um. Starting with the teacher, getting any questions that you have answered about your child's education, any kind of progress, go right to the source. Um, then obviously if you need additional support, you can also go to the school counselor. And we have listed all the staff. I'm not going to go through each, every single school. Um, and then leading up to if the child does have a case manager. Each school has each case manager listed with their email, phone number, extension, and then going down the line to step two. Assistant principal, um, and then continuing on, um, step three principal. So we're just trying to create a little bit of a chain of commands to get your questions answered. We want to make sure that, um, anybody that you want to reach obviously is available, um, but this is just a nice, quick. Uh, way to access any staff member in each building. And Chris and I are at the end of each one. We're obviously available at any time as well.
Uh, so when we talk about, uh, individualized education programs, um, your IEPs. Uh, it starts off with a few sections that are important. So when we talk about, do I have to read the whole thing? Uh, the short answer is yes, uh, but there is some key points, um, that really stand out for you, uh, when your child has an IEP. Um, first, the title page has all the information that you need on the front with the diagnosis or the classification. Um, for the reason for the IEP, um, the signature page, uh, meeting dates, the evaluation dates, when the next re-eval may occur. Um, and then following that, you'll get your present levels. Uh, we often call this, um, in-house the PLAS. The present levels of academic, um, achievement and functional performance. And this is really the story that follows the student. Um, I often tell teachers to focus on that part first. Uh, because that's giving you an outline of what your predecessor, you know, the, the teachers that had the student before you. Um, their experiences, what worked, what didn't work, um, how did, was the relationship built within that class, um, before they got to you? Um, so I always encourage them to read that first, um, and then we get into goals and objectives. Um, and goals and objectives, we always talk about SMART goals, so they're specific, measurable, achievable, um, relevant and time-bound. Um, so the, this should be based off of evaluations within the IEP, you know, where there might be a weakness or a skill deficit. And something we want to work on throughout the academic areas, um, in the IEP. Um, one of the things that we talked about is there's no magic number. Doesn't mean if you have more, that's better. Um, there really should be targeted, um, for skill development, um, for your child or your student.
And then continuing on parts of the IEP, we have the modifications and accommodation sections. Um, so modifications change what is learned versus the accommodations is to change how content is learned. Um, so that is one section, um, and kind of similar to goals and objectives, uh, more is not always better. So you want to make sure that they're appropriate for the child and they should be individualized. Um, leading into the program page, so again, we're going to kind of get into all the different program of, uh, options that we have available. In district, uh, but this is the page where the child would have their current programming setting. They might be in a general education classroom, um, that won't be listed on this section, but it will say things like. Maybe a special education setting, that's where that page would be. And then the related services, additionally, you can have services in occupational therapy or physical therapy. Um, you can have some behavioral consults, counseling, that's the section and it'll always tell you, um, what the service is. How often it's being delivered and in what setting. So it's a very detailed page and this is a, an important page to, to attend to. And then there's other sections in the IEP, um, that may or may not be applicable to the child and that's the behavior intervention plan. Uh, usually not all children need a BIP, uh, which is the acronym, uh, for. There, if they do have behaviors, that might be something that is implemented into the IEP. And you may see in the related services section, a consult so that the behaviorists may be overseeing that BIP. Um, then there's also the parental concern section, that is something that every parent has a right to add. Exactly what they want written in that section, uh, and then the procedural safeguards. So these are all sections in the IEP.
And then across the district, we have programs, um, available in each of the different buildings. Uh, in elementary school, they vary by building, our self-contained ERI class, uh, is at SJG. Um, we have LLD, uh, over at, um, Hillview. And then our MD and our preschool disabilities programs are at, uh, North Boulevard. Um, and then in the middle school, we have our MD program, we also have an LLD program and then our self, our, um, in-class resource and our class resource classes. You know, our, you know, OCR and ICR, no, we have a lot of acronyms and we're going to put together a resource to kind of break those down for you. Um, and so be looking for that in the future. Uh, and then self-contained programs, uh, those are the ones I mentioned, the ERI, you know, we call it CLE. Which I always forget what it's called.
It's collaborative learning environment.
So that's the program at SJG. Uh, ERI stands for emotional regulation impairment. Um, MD is the multiple disabilities program, um, we have that at PV and then at the high school. We don't have a young adult program here right now because we don't have any young adults in the program. Uh, but we will in a couple of years unless someone moves in, in that, you know, timeframe. Um, and then we have our, you know, in-class and our class resource classes.
So as I said before, in the program page, you'll have related services. So we have in our, in our district, we are fortunate enough to have three behaviorists. Uh, and that again acronym BCBA, which is a board certified behavior analyst. Uh, it's a professional who studies behavior of children and creates plans to improve problematic behavior. Uh, you have an SLP, a speech language pathologist. Again, we have five wonderful ladies that we work in district. Um, and they obviously, um, they will do evaluations and they'll provide indirect and direct services. Um, we also, in the last, I think, two years, we also are utilizing the three to one model. So that's something that's also embedded into the IEPs and pretty much that means that all the related services. They have three weeks of direct services and then we have one flexible week, indirect week, where they may be pushing into classrooms. They may be, uh, doing missed sessions, uh, they may, uh, be, they're collaborating with our colleagues, they're doing evaluations. Uh, they're doing pushes into classroom, training, paris, staff and plethora of other things. Um, OT, PT, occupational therapist and a physical therapist. Um, so again, uh, we have, uh, three OTs in district and we have, um. One, hopefully two PTs in our district coming soon. Uh, and then counseling, every, we are fortunate enough that we have a school counselor in each of our elementary schools, which is wonderful. Uh, we do provide school-based counseling, uh, for short-term intervention to help our kids that may need it. Uh, to cope with their social emotional needs. And then I know that at the middle school, we have three wonderful counselors and at the high school. Four, five, four, five counselors, missed one there. So we have a lot of great staff, um, to provide our students all the services that they need.
So when counseling shows up in your IEP, there's several staff members that could be assigned to provide it and that's the school counselors, like you mentioned. Uh, it could also be our student assistance coordinator, she's also a licensed counselor. Um, and then it could be your social worker, they can provide school-based counseling, um, and the school psychologist, um, is that the last piece of that puzzle that could provide counseling. Um, and then we also partner with, uh, our CPAC group, our special education parent advisory committee. Uh, we meet once monthly, uh, to go over any concerns, air the district. Um, they are also going to, you know, speak tonight, um, so we're excited about that. Um, their website is also tagged there. Like we said, we'll post this, um, for everyone in the future. And then last but not least, we have the resources page. Um, we just added a couple of resource links there, um, directly to the code. So if there's any questions to the state code, um, whether it's classroom sizes or programs or anything that you may have a question about. Um, a lot of it's, you know, found right there. Um, we reference this a lot just to make sure everything is aligned and perfect. Um, Parent University, um, we do a lot of, you know, in, you know, district, uh, opportunities for learning with our, you know, parent groups. Um, I often talk about this when we're interviewing people and one of my first questions is, what would you like to provide, you know, our community? Um, if you were, you know, given an opportunity to speak to them and they always have an answer and it's really cool to kind of leverage that. Um, so we always kind of bring them in to talk about the parent university. Uh, behavioral health resources, we have a link there and then a, a quick, um, IEP tip sheet, which is a pretty comprehensive and a really nice resource. So. Um, when you have a chance, click there. And then last but not least, Helena and myself, our emails, um, always available for you, um, for any questions you may have. Regarding, uh, IEPs.
Any questions?
Thank you.
What a night. That was, uh, the anchor. So thank you. And then we'll bring in CPAC, which I'm sure will be better than moving.
Hi, good evening. I am Melissa Stalmasik. I am the community liaison of CPAC. Renee Bluestein is back there. She's with me. She is the, um, Paquonic Valley Middle School liaison. Um, what is CPAC? If you are not familiarized with us, we, um, are a special education parent advisory council. Every public school district in New Jersey is required to establish a CPAC. Just so you know, in some districts, they are referred to as CPAGs. Um, and that would be a group instead of a council. Um, the purpose of these groups is to provide opportunities for parents and community members to offer input to their districts. On critical issues relating to students with disabilities. Thank you. Um, the purpose and responsibility of our group. Um, it is district-wide organization created by parents to support the emotional, social and academic well-being of children with special needs. We provide information, educational opportunities, resources and support to families and professionals. Striving to achieve the maximum benefit for all children in our community. Our vision, uh, we aim to improve the systematic issues for children classified for special education. Related services and to promote inclusion of children with special needs with the necessary support within their schools and communities. At large. And our mission, uh, the Paquonic Special Education Parent Advisory Council is to facilitate communication between parents. Staff and administration regarding the district's special education programs. And to provide input to the district on issues concerning students with disabilities. This just shows, um, the breakdown of our parent executive board. Um, this year we have a new representative, April Hagan from Hillview, um, Amy Ferrante is for North Boulevard. Uh, we actually have two North Boulevard preschool representatives. Tina, who will be soon joining you and Danielle Leon. Um, at Stephen J. Gerace, we are currently open and we have been open for some time. We are looking for a representative. So if anybody is aware, um, of somebody who'd be interested in joining us, um, they can always contact us by email. Um, as I mentioned, Renee is the Paquonic Valley Middle School, Melissa Kraus is the high school. I am the community liaison, Lynn Schwartz is a transition liaison as well as out of district and VOTAC. And Kristin Perry is with our cornerstone program, which is at the high school. Uh, currently right now, so we normally will meet, um, as a group. And then what we will do is we will provide, um, programs for the community. So we just recently had had a program, um, I believe it was, was it November? It was November. Um, it was November and, um, that was currently a Zoom program that we had had. We had also earlier in October had, um, a parent. Community meeting where all parents in the district, whether your child has an IEP, a 504, you may join the meeting. Um, it is not attended by the, um. By the administrators. So it is only parents. And they are allowed to speak freely about things that are working for them, um, things that may not be working for them. And then what we will do is we bring that information back to Helena and Chris during our meetings. And then we, um, we discuss what had happened and then they always come back and they give us answers that we could bring back to the parents. So just so that you know, we do have our next parent meeting, um, which will be taking place on January fourteenth. At seven thirty PM and there will be a Zoom, which we will be sending out the link very soon. Um, and I think that's pretty much it. Um, I don't know if you have any questions, but you can always reach us by email. And as Chris and Helena said, we do meet with them monthly and we've been doing that for some time. So it works great. It is.
Uh, real quick, I mean, I, it's, it's funny, like today's like a reflection over the last six years with, with Megan, um, leaving. But I, I just want to, you know, thank you and congratulate you guys on the last six years. Because I remember the meetings that we used to have uptown.
Want to remember those, Joe?
No, I don't want to remember those. And this was a need. That was not welcomed by individuals that will remain nameless in this, in this, you know, in formerly in the district. And it's amazing what, you know, again, the need of it for anybody to resist that, it's amazing. But you guys were not going to be told no. Um, because it was a need, uh, it's clearly grown, again, bringing in Lincoln Park, I think it's phenomenal. Uh, so again, just great job. Thank you. And yeah, it's, it's great that we don't have those types of meetings anymore. And it's just a, uh, self-sustaining program. Thank you.
No, thank you guys. Um, I have to say, we have partnered with Lincoln Park and, um. We actually went to, last year we went to Booton's Transition Fair. And they have a phenomenal group over there as well. We were really, we, we gathered so much great information. Our first presentation was somebody that we had met there. Our second presentation, um, on. Don't look at me. It's, what the heck are we doing? It's, um, in January. It's leaving me. She's going to scroll. There's so many people that we met that, um, they had contacted us after we had met in Booton. And it was just, it was so great. And so they're willing to come in and they're willing to do presentations. And we've done a lot of presentations in-house as well, which we're also currently looking to do for the rest of the year. So it's just been great. But, um, I do want to say there are so many other districts in the area. Once we started branching out. And when I took on this community liaison position because my son had aged out and, you know, time passed on. I, I, we all of a sudden just realized. time passed on, I s- I we all of a sudden just realized there are so many districts that are not run by parents. They are run strictly by the district. So originally CPACs were, they were supposed to be for the parents and run by the parents. So the fact that Paquonic still has that is great. Um Lincoln Park has been trying to do that as well and transition into that. So it's just been, it's been, it's been a ride. But we've enjoyed it. So we just want to thank all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, that brings us to approval of the minutes and I'm gonna ask uh Machet to please move the minutes.
I would like to move approval of the minutes from November eighteenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Getton?
Yes.
McSweeney?
Yes.
Pompeo is absent. Ms. Chanton?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senic?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to our first opportunity for public comment. Members of the public may speak once for a maximum period of five minutes by the clock during this portion of the meeting. Uh the public may speak on any agenda item only during the five minutes. And if you raise a question, please direct it to the board president, state your name and sign in before we begin. All right, seeing none, we're gonna move into approval of action items and our slash workshop. So first up is PMC. Where before we vote, we have two discussion items, school start time and surveys uh related to the school start time changes and staffing update.
All right, thank you, Mr. Senic. Um we sent out surveys, uh three different surveys to our students, our staff and our community members. And what our hope was there was to receive general, generalized um information on the perceptions of each of those stakeholder groups based on the implementation of new schedules at both PV and the high school. Um we really wanted to get a sense of what people were perceiving a third of the way into the school year. And it was very interesting to see the responses um both through the the quantifiable data as well as through the um the narratives that people provided in some instances. I'm still working my way through a a lot of the um qualitative data, which is a lot more difficult to organize and categorize, but it's also fascinating and really lends literally and figuratively voice to the data. Um the board members have received the various graphs and charts that were um generated by Google Forms from the information that we received. And one thing I'm gonna point out too is that there are multiple variables involved in the data collection. So we can't necessarily say that changing the schedule or delaying this or pushing the start time back um necessarily has a causal relationship to the perceptions that were expressed by the different stakeholder groups. But it is very interesting to note that um there were some pretty consistent patterns and um we we saw some differences between the perceptions of staff versus what students were sensing, which we expected. Um occasionally the parents were the middle ground between the two, but not always the case. Um the way the questions were set up was intended to um look very, very similar for each group. So the first question dealt with the topic of rest. For students, the statement was, I feel better rested this year. Staff, my students seem better rested this year. For families, my children seem better rested this year. Um the positive responses that we got from the staff weren't uh weren't terribly strong. It was a fifty eight point two percent response that was positive. We used a Likert scale that went from one through four. That was very intentionally done as well. If you use a scale that has an odd number, people tend to float towards the middle. So if it's a scale of one to nine, people will end up with a five. So um we wanted to make it so that things were either definitively on the positive side or on the negative side. So um out of the seventy nine respondents amongst the staff, only fifty eight point two percent felt that students seem more rested. And that's between PV and the high school. Uh the parents said sixty three point three percent felt that students seem better rested. So that was a lot more promising. And what was great is among the kids, uh seventy seven point four percent of them felt that they were better rested this year. And again, we're not saying that this is the direct consequence of changing the schedules, but it's good to see that that's moving in a positive direction. And many of them uh among the students did express at the high school level that they appreciated um the the change in the start time. Um what was interesting too is a number of the respondents at the middle school who were sixth graders said it was challenging. And I hadn't anticipated that, but their start time is forty minutes earlier than what it had been in elementary school. So as I was going through, I definitely had a few, yeah, moments uh in reading through that. The next question uh centered on the topic of mental health. Uh the student statement was, my overall sense of well being feels better this year. For staff, the overall well being of my students seems better this year. For families, the overall well being of my children seems better this year. And again, this is a massive overarching statement, um but it's one where we want to just get a sense of what is the perception here. Um among the staff, seventy two point two percent seemed to think that the overall well being seems better this year. I found that to be very promising. Parents were on it or families were on a pretty similar scale, that seventy point nine percent of them were positive. But what was, I was really excited about is eighty eight point three percent of our students said they felt that their overall sense of well being feels better this year. Um that has me feeling really excited. I think that's very promising and we definitely want to keep on on that trajectory. Um for those who who've read the anxious generation, which I know has been getting a lot of attention, um this is something that that is a huge concern among um young people, uh particularly those who have come of age since the advent of the smartphone. So if we can find ways to try to help them feel a better sense of well being, I'm I'm very excited for it. And by the way, please feel free to chime in at any point amongst the the board as well. I realize I'm the one who's holding, literally holding the data information, but you have access to it as well.
I think you just said it right there. When I saw those results, the first thing that jumped off the page at me was the the mental health of the students, them themselves saying how much better they feel, how much better rested they feel. And as a board member, your main priority is student achievement.
Right.
So to see the students reap an actual benefit to this, it really made me feel like we made the right decision.
So this was really great. The first couple of questions are PV, PTHS. You can see the the difference. But the main ones, they weren't broken out that way. Can, is it possible for us to see them that way or did it go out? That we can't pull that. I'm just, you know, you mentioned like the sixth graders. I'd really be curious to see about the change in the high school and and how the students answered.
Yeah, and that's something with um with the spreadsheets that are generated by Google Forms, I can break it out more so I could look at um specifically amongst the sixth graders, wh- what are we seeing amongst seventh graders and so forth? Because I did have the students respond by grade. So I didn't get these readily accessible pie charts from that, but I think with a deeper dig into the information, I could probably pull something out there. And what could be very interesting too is organizing as such and looking at um the different open ended responses that are provided uh according to the grade groups as well.
I mean, even just high school and I I, if you, if you'd like to go deep, that would be wonderful, but even just high school and middle school because the time change really PV didn't change. So.
Yeah, the only real change at PV was in in shortening the class minutes and then adding on um the block at the end of the day. Exactly. Uh but this is, yeah, cou- couple of years back, I did do a quantitative analysis for my dissertation and I and I I found myself um uncovering more and then generating more questions than I was finding answers. And I sense that this is gonna be the process as I dig deeper into this, but knowing that there there's an audience for it, I think it's very motivating. So I look forward to digging deeper into this. You've been warned.
Was this survey sent out to the entire district or just a certain select uh people?
So um it, the the selects people were those who click on my, on my uh weekend update, which actually gets a pretty good readership from what I've been told. But yeah, so the the family one I sent out, um and I believe Mr. Sebrowski and Mr. Hayes are also followed up. And then um they they took care of the portion that was sent out to staff amongst their respective staff members. Um and then they also ensured that students had time to complete the surveys in school as well. So this, so we we tried to blanket the entire community. And I I say it kind of tongue in cheek that it's only the readers of my weekend update. But um if if people, if people wanted access to it, everyone had access to it.
And we had over five hundred student responses.
Yep.
That's great.
Yeah.
I do think I have to agree with Mrs. Shenton that it'd be worth breaking out PV versus PTHS because I I think that well rested question doesn't really have anything to do with PV. And also the Panther period is used in such different ways across the two schools that I think it would be worth looking at the responses to those separately and seeing kind of what the perception of the use of the Panther period at the high school is compared to PV.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I I love having the the generalized overview, but where you get the really interesting information is is the deeper you dig into the specific details.
The results are definitely impressive. Uh definitely like the 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 less tired and the better mental health. Um and I I know that when going back and all the research and the work that we did going into looking to uh move to later start times. Well, we heard presentations from other schools and they were pointing to data like this. You know, I was like, wow, they have data like this. Now we're a district that has data like that too. You say like, hey, we surveyed our students and this is what they're saying. This is how they're feeling. And then we can build on that in years to come. We can say, look, three years ago they were here. Now we're collectively here. Uh it's it's a great start. I think it's yeah, really, really cool.
Yeah, and I I'm looking forward to, um we'll do at least certainly at least one more and hopefully two more. I don't want to um do death by survey where you kind of had that overkill, but I definitely want to find out as we get much deeper into this because there may be a recency bias of, hey, this is new and exciting. But after we've got a hundred twenty days or more under our belts, wh- what's this really gonna look like? Um and I think that I want to uh mimic a lot of the format of these questions. And I will say, and I appreciate the board support as we were developing the questions, um it was, it was a relief to come up with statements that were more simple than than terribly specific and detailed. And I felt like that may have actually helped our our respondents be able to respond more confidently easily as well. Um just other, a couple of other quick topics to cover.
Uh just on on that, um I have to tell you, I was a little nervous about what the results were gonna be. Um and I was thrilled to see what they were. Uh I do have a request for uh everyone who's listening out there ever anywhere. A red, green, colorblind people don't appreciate pie charts with red and green. It's the same color. Okay?
Noted.
Blue, light blue.
So just listen closely.
Purple and blue is no good either.
We'll, we'll, we'll work on that.
All right, thank you.
But let's see if I find a good translation, K. Yeah, sorry about that. And it is something, anytime you do a survey too, there there is that bit of of nervousness of what am I gonna get back? And and in some cases, people responded back with open ended responses that were not necessarily germane to the question being asked um or or really the the purpose of the survey. But I want to recognize that it means that they have something to say and and it's important. And the survey is intended to give people a voice. Um and that's something, there was a recommendation from one of the board members to do the open ended response after each question. And I think that that really helped because you do want people to feel like they are being heard. Wh- whether there's any action to follow, that that that's tough to say, but at at least get those ideas out there. So um I'll I'll cook through these other ones because I realize it is, it's a long meeting. Um but for for the extra help and support, the um statement for students is the schedule has helped me get more extra help or support. For staff, the schedule has helped my students receive more extra help or support. For families, the schedule has helped my children receive more extra help or support. Um among the staff, uh eighty one percent said, uh responded in the affirmative to that. Um it wasn't quite as strong among families. It was only sixty seven point one. And then interestingly, uh the students were pretty consistent with what the staff said. That was an eighty two point six percent um positive response about getting more extra help or support. By the way, agonized over that phrasing because it sounds like more extra help. What? More extra? But in context, it makes sense. Um as for the length of the class period at PV, we actually um took minutes off the e- each class period. And then for the high school, we added to the class period. And that wasn't intended to be counterintuitive. High school students are better suited to longer class periods than are their middle school peers, but also the high school, we moved to the rotating drop block. Um the amount of minutes for each class period helps my students perform better. Seventy three point four percent of staff members agreed with that. Parents uh came in at seventy five point nine, so were really consistent there. And students uh came in at eighty point six. So that's, that's really strong as well. What I'd be interested even with that is if I were to take out the sixth graders and probably the freshmen, um what that data would look like as well, because they don't really have a baseline um for comparison. And then the last one, and I had a feeling this one was gonna be hit or miss, uh is regarding the Panther period, which is something that we're still in the process of defining it. And even when when we did a site visit to a school that, a middle school in way that has a similar structure to what we now have. They said it took them a couple of years to really figure out how to define, how to use that block. They had a basic overview and they made it work. But to really refine it down to the point where they felt they'd achieved excellence took took some years. So um we are gonna be patient with this, but we want to keep trying to make sure that we're refining our practice. And so the information here is very helpful too. The Panther period uh where the staff member saying my students use the Panther period effectively to get extra help and reinforcement, um sixty point eight percent um were in the affirmative for that. I'd like to break that down further by PV and in the high school, it's PV, it's required. The high school, it is not. Um for for the parent part, it was sixty seven point one percent. Um and then for the students, this is quite remarkable. Um they said eighty seven point four percent of them answered in the affirmative. So they were significantly greater than what what families were saying and um even more so. When staff says sixty point, sixty point eight percent of staff felt students were using it well, the kids themselves, eighty seven point four percent felt they were using it well. So obviously a a different perception of what what we have there. I do think that we have to market it better to our students at the high school. This is what this time is set aside to do. A few staff members worked in some suggestions about how we could maybe use the time even better, which we're gonna look into what we can do, especially as we look to start building next year's schedule. But um I'm gonna add just again, I I appreciate the feedback that we got from everybody who took the time to respond. Um I know it's not always exciting to respond to surveys, but it really helps us be a lot more mindful in the, in our decision making and our analysis of that decision making. Does anything else? All right, good. And then the other one, I I just think it's an important topic to have for all the discussions, um and that is staffing update. Um again, it goes without saying, but we are in nationwide in a staffing crisis for schools. Um New Jersey is not doing as poorly as uh some of our friends across the United States, but um we're we're doing, we're in pretty good shape in chronic right now. Um I I want to note, we currently have several leave replacement positions that are being filled with staff who we really hope to keep um keeping the mix as much as we can. Um leave replacements come up for a number of reasons and they are, uh it's difficult to find people who are available and who are um gonna be outstanding in in filling them. We we've done really well with people we have in place right now. And uh we'd like to we'd like to keep them in the mix so that they can continue to support our our students. And also if a staff member has to be out for any reason, for any length of time, it's good for them to know that their kids are being um taken care of and looked out for. Um we're currently interviewing for a speech language pathologist, um as well as the school psychologist position. Um as Ms. Bronco also mentioned, uh I have an interview with the um physical therapy candidate, I believe on Wednesday. So we'll hope to have that sealed up before the end of two thousand twenty four. And an exciting note, our new PV assistant principal, Mr. David Raffo, is going to be starting on January second. Technically January first, but we're not open on January first. Unfortunately, I was hoping we could, but I was told I'm not allowed to. So we'll, we'll wait till the second. Uh but he was able to visit the school on Friday, get to meet some of the students, some of the staff. He's really excited to join us and we're happy to have him. So right now, um knock on wood, we're, we're um a very strong position staffing wise. Um and we'll continue to look to fill these positions with the best people we can find.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Portis. Moving on to the approval of the action items. Uh Mr. Cerisi, would you please move the PMC items?
I would like to move PMC one oh six dash twenty five through PMC one nineteen dash twenty five.
Second.
Any question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Getton?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Which Pompeio is absent. Ms. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Senic?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. McSweeney. Would you please move the items under CIS?
Yes, I'd like to move CIS forty five dash twenty five through CIS forty nine dash twenty five.
Second.
Any question or discussion? Any question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo is absent. Ms. Sinton? Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Sennett?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to FFA with two discussion items. Use of protective equipment for football during the summer recess period and state regulation regarding driving. School vans. The first one, just to kick it off, it seems like a no-brainer to me that if they're gonna be out there. Playing some kind of sport, even if it's just non-contact and the protective equipment is really just there just in case. Still better having it be there than not be there.
Yeah, and I I'm really happy with the proposal that Mr. Michelle has submitted. He's our football coach, submitted to Mr. Silpina, who is our athletic director. And um what it comes down to is according to NJ SIAA, which is the governing body for uh high school athletics throughout New Jersey. Um, in order for football players to be able to use. Wear their full equipment or any portion of their equipment during the summer recess, uh it needs board approval. So Mr. Michelle developed the proposal. He went through the chain of command, first to Mr. Silpina, who then sent it to me and obviously I'm sending it along to you. But um his rationale is grounded, as Mr. Sennett alluded to. Um, and player's safety, it's really important that um kids learn how to wear their helmets and pads correctly. Um, and that they become comfortable with that. I I think more than anything with the helmet, so it becomes almost an extension of who they are and and they. They get used to the different weight and it is, it's a different experience wearing that uh on your head. Absolutely, because you're you're seeing things differently and you have to know how to turn your head, so. Um, I I felt his rationale for player's safety was very well phrased and then. Um, skill development, it's important that they learn how to be more mobile and agile while wearing the equipment. And then just in terms of best practices, um if you're gonna be performing with this gear on, it it's it's best to have it on. Um, he also included um information about sizing, distribution and practical use to make sure that the students. Um, student athletes are um are fitted out with the correct sizes and this way, if they're not. Plenty of time to be able to accommodate the need to to switch out. Um, and just want to make sure that they're that they become as comfortable as possible with their with their gear, so. I think it's a great idea. Obviously, if I did not, would not be making it to the board agenda.
So will this be on a future meeting as an action item to vote?
Uh, yes.
What what is the reason that they they haven't been wearing pads? Is it because of heat? Is it heat stroke related or?
I I I don't think so. I I think a lot of it has to do with um previous practices involving students being. Involved in contact drills when they're not supposed to be. And there there is this suspicion that if you if you give student athletes the gear, that the coach will have them hitting. Um, and that that's not the case. It's not what we're looking for here. I mean, I've heard the cautionary tale. My mom went to St. Cecilia's and they they got shut down for an entire year because of. Coaches' practices during a summer actually resulted in player fatality. Um, this was also in the sixties, much different timeframe, but knowing this from my family history and all four of my uncles played there. I'm very aware of the importance of player's safety. Also, I have a son who played football. But with this, um, to me, I I I think the rules were put in place to make sure that people didn't. Um, succumb to the temptation to have drills that they shouldn't have. Um, and as a result. A lot of schools with the right intentions lost out on a good teaching opportunity for the kids.
Yeah, so on the other document that um from NJ SIA was, there's no fuller contact permitted during the summer recess time.
Yeah, there there's in other words, yeah, there's no hitting. Um, you so so with this, you're you're learning how to run patterns, you you know, obviously you're you're gonna stretch and do some conditioning as well, but. This is not intended for them to be able to do to a any hitting or um anything resembling contact.
Okay.
The uh state regulations regarding the driving, um driving vans has changed, as I mentioned in my my original report. Um, the person we hired this evening, she won't be starting until February first. Because she's actually now working on her CDL and she will have her CDL by February first, so she can start right away when she has that. Um, that was in lieu of her waiting until July to be hired. Um, she wants to be a bus driver with the big buses and this is the way the route to go. So it's really a good thing for us. We're very fortunate in that respect. Um, I look from what I understand, she's a very good driver. She's driven for years, so we're very pleased. Right, she's working full-time right now for her CDL.
Just a quick update, uh, so I was gonna save this for my uh board member comments at the end. But at the uh Morris County ESC, which deals a lot with transportation, um, the update art that superintendent gave there was that as of this date, which was. Two weeks ago, um, there are no new no new regulations from the DOE or from motor vehicles regarding this. Um, the legislation is there, but there's no new formal rules, so. Morris County ESC is not doing anything with drivers without CDLs yet.
Yeah, there there was a hang-up um in Trenton with it, but also what's interesting is there's currently a run on the vans. So right now, if you want to order one of those eight to nine person passenger vans, New Jersey. Can't get one, um, because they're they're on backorder because so many schools jumped on it once this once this came out.
Yeah, that's why you see the van that's on the uh agenda for approval. It's gonna take three months to get here, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. We got it.
We got it early, yes. Yeah. Any other question? No? Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Mr. Blumer, would you please move the items under FFA?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to move FFA sixty-six dash twenty-five through FFA eighty-four dash twenty-five.
Any question or discussion? Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes, to all except FFA sixty-seven twenty-five where it pertains to me, Al Epstein.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney? Mr. Pompeo is absent. Ms. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Sennett?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to take a minute to thank the PTHS Association of Music Parents for their very generous donations for the march marching band stipends.
Alright, moving on to policy, two discussion items, uh extracurricular activities, policy twenty-four thirty R and an AI policy work update.
Alright, as a parting gift to Ms. Dempsey, I'll take care of these two. So the extracurricular activities, not much of a a board conversation on that one. Um, just to point out that in this regulation, um on the third page, um, there is an item listed regarding the evaluation of activities. Um, this is something that I want to make sure that we're following at um at the at the building level this year. So that we can really get a a good sense of which student activities. Or extracurricular activities are being well-attended and and are um still of significant enough interest. If we have activities that are no longer garnering sufficient student interest. Uh, my my intention is to is to um dissolve whatever that activity might be and replace it with something. That reflects current student interests. Um, right now, there's a movement at the high school to pivot from the um. The sad club, which students construct driving, um, that is no longer running. We have actually a lot of interest in a boxing club and I was uh speaking with Mr. Hazler about um sharing with me our proposal for that, so. I'm looking for ways that we can meet students where they are, so in the. On page three, it does give information about what should be involved in the evaluation. I'm looking more than anything in membership and attendance. Uh, regular meetings, but I am also interested in how we're giving kids opportunities to demonstrate leadership. Um, and then one other item that will be up for a vote is in that evaluation. Portion, excuse me, um, there is a. One one of the stipulations is such other indicia of people's growth and development as the evaluators may choose. Um, we're gonna change the word indicia, which is a real word, but it goes more with the markings that appear on an envelope and the. When the post office has um has marked it, we're gonna go with indicators, which is. Yeah, it's it's less strained. It sounds less like, hey, I have a thesaurus, I'm gonna use it, so I I I'm a fan of it. We'll go with clarity, so minor change, but um but just more important to point out, we're gonna be enforcing this one. With the goal of making sure that we're maximizing the opportunities for our kids. I don't know if any questions on that one? I don't know if anybody's gonna miss indicia. Really important. Um, and then other thing worth noting is, um, I put on there that uh our AI policy work update. Um, we we had our first meeting of the um the district AI team. I know that uh Mr. Shea did a great job running that and that Mr. Hazler is encouraging him to call, I believe, the AI Justice League of Quantic. Yep, uh, that that was met, for those of you uh who were watching us on video, was met with a fist pump from said Mr. Shea, that's a good sign. Um, but what I was really excited about is um the committee's comprised of people from a lot of different stakeholder groups in the community. We have. Um, principals, we have supervisors, we have students, we have staff members, we have uh board members. Um, we have a teacher who's also a a a parent who's also multilingual and has been able to talk about how. Um, AI can be used in helping students learn different languages. Um, one one of the parents who's on the team is. Um, is also heavily involved in technology and it works in uh educational circles as well. Um, Ms. Vanskull is also a part of this, so um re- really excited about the um representation we have in that group. Hearing student voices to me is really exciting and I know that we're also recruiting a few more um students to be a part of this. Um, we've established three separate subcommittees. Um, we each were able to put in our requests for which po- subcommittee we'd like to join. Um, those groups are ethics and obstacles, tools and best practices and policy and planning. Full disclosure, I put in for policy and planning and I really hope I get picked. And I don't know, Mr. Shea, anything you want to add or do you think I covered it? Sounds great. Um, and it's something that we we talked about very, very briefly in that meeting, though, is that. We want the policy to be something that we can put on the books and have in place. Um, but the AI plan needs to be that fluid living document that can move. With the same rapidity with which we're seeing um AI evolving and changing. Um, so I I'm excited for this. Um, and I know that. Mr. Shea is currently up to his eyeballs in AI information, but that's a good thing. Um, because I think he's really gonna be a leader, not just for this school community, but across the state.
I'll also point out that the monster policy update that Strauss Smei dropped in our laps as a nice holiday present. Includes um a new AI policy that then kind of allows you to say this is what will be in our plan, which can be the more flexible document. Um, and they're also revising what we currently have called the plagiarism policy to an academic integrity policy and I imagine touches on some of this and that. Seems like a good move um in a direction because plagiarism is not the only issue of academic integrity anymore, so. Have fun with that new policy committee.
I just wanted to add, um, I attended um the Rutgers New Jersey Computer Science Summit on Friday. Um, and there was about two hundred and thirty, two hundred and forty different um attendees. And one of the things we ta- we talked a lot about AI on Friday and um in one of the sessions, they asked. How many districts had a had an AI policy committee, policy and or committee started? And it was a very small percentage of the um districts represented. A lot of them said that. Some of them said that they were waiting to kind of see how everything landed because. Um, they didn't want their policies to have to change, like, because they're expecting everything to have to change so quickly. So um we definitely shared how that's why we're jumping in and looking at to make it uh the guidelines a little bit more fluid. Um, so that we can keep up with the changes.
And actually, it it's a little bit um, a little bit of veering left, but I. From the direction of where we were going with the conversation too, but I'm so glad you brought up where you were. This man's gonna put you on the spot too, because you also got a lot of information about what's happening at the state level for cybersecurity.
Uh, well, so one of the keynote speakers was the head of um New Jersey Cyber Security. It's called NJ Kick and I can't remember what that second C is, but it's NJ like cybersecurity, something integration cell. Um, super interesting, uh, a little terrifying, uh, because he is basically explaining the importance of. Um, how us getting into education with the cybersecurity and data science. And one of the things which um I've. Didn't get on to the workshopping, but just to mention the program of studies. Um, we're excited about how the program of study studies is moving to, for the high school, is moving to a Google site format. Um, Mr. Hazel is working extremely hard on it. It looks amazing and he's gonna be adding things even like um videos. Uh, making more of a living document, so you can go on and maybe get a testimonial of why you should take this course, things like that. Um, two of the new additions are cybersecurity and data science being paired up as a two half-year courses together. So that we're moving in that direction, but it was uh very interesting, um. And as I said, terrifying. Keynote about how important this is um and for students to understand it, even students who aren't interested in. Um, going into STEM careers or computer science, but all of our students should be getting this information so that they, because they're active users. Um, yes, lots of.
Alright, uh, Ms. Dempsey, would you please move the one item under policy?
Motion to approve P zero seven dash two five.
Blumer, second question or discussion? Okay, Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo is absent. Ms. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Sennett?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Gitten, would you please move the item under other?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to move other O dash three dash twenty-five.
Second.
Second.
Uh, McSweeney, second question or discussion? Not that we could discuss it.
Yeah.
Mr. Gibbs, please call the roll.
Mr. Blumer?
Yes.
Mr. Cerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gitten?
Yes.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Pompeo is absent. Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
And Mr. Sennett?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to our second opportunity for public comment. Members of the public may speak for a maximum period of five minutes by the clock during this portion of the meeting. And during this portion, they may speak on any topic during their five minutes. If a member does raise a question, please direct the question to the board president, state your name and sign in before we begin.
Donation Sunset Road, Pompton Plains, uh, finance for the high school music parents group. Uh, first, I wanna also thank um Ms. Dempsey for her time into this district. Um. I also want to thank uh the board for approving uh the music department trip to New York City. Um, tomorrow night, we have uh the winter concert here. It's the concert band, concert choir. Jazz band and then octaves uh all performing. And then to bookend the winter break, when the students come back, that Friday, January third. Uh, there's gonna be uh the cabaret night. It's gonna, it's moving back to the cafeteria. That's where it started. It felt more, I don't know. City nightclubby, sitting at round tables, you know, like real close up to the performers and stuff. So moving back over there, seven o'clock, uh, that's Friday, January third. Um, Mr. Arnold has a theme of um songs either performed. By the villains of musicals or songs about the villains, so. It'll be, it's different music. The students pick their own, the songs they want to do. It's all small groups and and he tries to. To give them a theme, to push them to do new things, so we hear different songs. That just never come up in in other uh productions. Um. Want to wish uh everyone a safe New Year. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I'll say that the uh the choice of the songs. Especially with the octaves is is crazy. At the one uh ceremony that we had the octaves perform at. They sang Thriller and it was unreal. It was like nothing I've ever heard. Because when they sing it without music and they they are the music, it's they have to do different things, beatboxing and really, really cool. So I I understand what you're saying about picking different songs and having it sound so cool. Very, very, very cool.
And if I could just chime in too, congratulations to your son on the recognition. And if I could just chime in too, congratulations to your son on the recognition. I've known him for a long time. I know he works very hard at it, and I know you've supported him, so congratulations on that. And as far as using the cafeteria for the cabaret, I think that's really cool. In a conversation with Ms. Brenziger, I'd said I want the high school library to feel like a combination between a French café and a used bookstore. So, maybe that's something we can aspire to, to make that space cool enough that it can, it can host a cabaret as well, but I think it's a great call, so that kids can feel like they can snap as they applaud, have a really outstanding time.
All right, that brings us to unfinished business. Any board member with unfinished business?
Uh, I do. On ten nineteen, I sent an, I don't expect an answer tonight. I inquire about BSN Sports Arrangement that we had. Got some responses, and I, I want to understand the money that goes back to our sports with it. As a board member, as we, we voted on BS, oh, excuse me, we voted on BSN as a vendor. Being a board member who voted on it, turning into a parent that has used it, I, I just want to understand it a little bit more. Because I, I, you know, I stated my, my reservations about not giving business to local embroidery companies, so forth and so on. I understand there might be, you know, rewards going back. I just want to understand it more. You don't have to answer it now. I just don't, I didn't get all that from the email chain.
Yeah, and I know I started working on a document for that. I don't know if I ever shared it out with the whole board, so I'll, I'll get something out.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll get that pretty quick, too.
Any board member with new business? Board member announcements?
Happy holidays, everybody.
Um, I would like to thank the admin team and the policy committee for working on the updated homework policy. Specifically, we had our first homework free weekend in Paquonic Township over Thanksgiving. And though this may not impact necessarily the elementary students or even the PV students, as a mom of a high school student who is in a very rigorous program, uh, this was amazing. I thought it was just phenomenal that there was no worry about homework or studying the whole weekend. It was very relaxing. I could feel the stress kind of drain from live, so I just wanted to, to thank everybody for that. I thought it was, I don't know if anybody else had that feeling, or if we're getting any feedback in terms of the homework free weekend, but this is one mom and one kid who very much appreciated it.
You know, I was, for you, Mike, I, I've been, I was shocked at some of the response. I was, you know, people were thanking me at like softball games, about it, parents. Parents that were so relieved about it.
Yeah.
Which I don't know if it was an element, but I was really processing, thinking like, oh, kids are gonna love this, right? It, it was parents that were so thankful for this, and I, I don't think I've ever really, again, looked at it in that point of view, but this was, this, yeah, this is.
Yeah, I thought it was great. I'm really looking forward to definitely Memorial Day weekend, I think will be fantastic for them, and then I don't know if we can squeeze another one in in the winter. I know that, you know, with AP classes and, and the academies, we have to make sure that certain curriculum is done. However, I do think, I would love to get some feedback from the kids if they even noticed, or if they, you know, felt like a little, I know Olivia definitely was less stressed, and I could, she could get some things done at home that she necessarily can't always get done, because she has homework, right? So, I mean, she, I, I just felt like the whole weekend, we were able to like relax. We did shopping, we kind of like enjoyed, like it was just, it was nice. So, very much appreciated. I hope that the district gets more feedback, or the admin team gets some more positive feedback. I also attended the PV Choir Concert, which was right here in the auditorium, which was phenomenal, so thank you for moving that here. I thought it was fantastic. Ms. Benitez did a phenomenal job, between the kids coming down with the candles in their hands, dressed in all black, with the holiday decorations and the beautiful songs. She has really done a lot with the program. I give her a lot of credit, because I don't know how you can get some of the eighth-grade boys and girls, and there are a lot of boys and girls in that program. She has grown it tremendously to participate, and they really did a nice job. I mean, I've worked in middle school before. I, yeah, it was, it was awesome. As a teacher, yeah. As, as a teacher, yes, I was.
I thought you weren't a real teacher.
Not a real teacher, so it was amazing. I, it was awesome. I just want to wish everybody a wonderful holiday season, especially our students and our staff. Have a phenomenal fun last week, because it is super fun, yet super crazy, and hopefully everybody has a wonderful, happy, and healthy New Year.
Um, I just want to stress how excited I am for this coming Thursday with the gymnasium school naming. Just the fact, like, I, it means a lot, like, my daughter is gonna be playing on the court a half hour after the ceremony as a PTHS basketball player, so it's just, it's amazing feeling to be able to see the ceremony. I think this is like two and a half years in the making. And it's here, and then, I, you know, then to be in the stands to watch the first game. And again, you know, personal aspect, and just having my daughter on that court, just very excited. Can't, can't stress enough.
Anybody else?
New York City traffic won't be as bad as tonight, and I'll be able to get there.
Stay on board that day.
You can stay for the game.
I go to sleep about eight-thirty now. My life is just completely upside down.
Anybody else?
Hi. The same night as the PV Choir Concert was the PV Band Concert. We were fortunate that ours, ours was first. But again, congratulations to Mr. Curtis, who also did an amazing job with that. Same comments, I think it was a, it was an amazing experience in terms of locale to have the band up on the stage. It was a full house in here, so it was amazing to see. Do need to work out some logistics in terms of people movement at the end of one, and those coming into the next one for next year, but nothing that couldn't be sorted out. Because I think it was a really great move out of the PV gym, no offense to the PV gym, but to have it held here was really very professional and elegant for the students, and hopefully a great experience for them, so well done.
Now, I, I really appreciate hearing that too, because that was something where we interviewed both Ms. Benitez and Mr. Curtis. We talked about is really providing an outstanding feeder program, what we have here, and to provide something where the students at that, at those grade levels can look at and say, this is, this is what I want to aspire to. So, even, you look, you look at tonight, how we had the octaves perform two songs and do so beautifully, and then be able to recognize the band for their remarkable achievements. But it doesn't just happen in a vacuum. There's so many contributors to it, and to know that things are happening with our, our middle school music program is, is really exciting, and I think the two of them are, are so energized, and just they have a vision for what they want to accomplish, and it sounds like the kids are on board, and it certainly sounds like the families are on board to support it, so I'm very excited for not just what that means for us for this year, but really for many, many years moving forward. I'd just like to wish everyone a happy holiday, and I look forward to all the great work we're gonna do in 2025.
I just got one. This Friday, I attended the Winter Dash for the North Baltimore HSA. Seems like every year, the Winter Dash gets just better and better and bigger and bigger. Unfortunately, this will be the last year, because my kids will all be into middle school, but I just want to say, great job to everyone that put that together, and can't wait to see how it grows in the future. And want to wish everyone a happy holiday. All right, we do have reason to go into executive session tonight, where we will discuss student matters. No action will be taken, and we will adjourn from there. Our next meeting will be January sixth here at the high school. We will reorganize. So, at this time, I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, good night, everyone.